Good evening. Now that everyone just sat, I'm going to ask everyone to please rise. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Moranty to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to move up the appointment of the police sergeant, please.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So yes, so as you can see, we do have a police presence here tonight, but it's all good. What's great about this is we actually get to see the police here quite often, which is a good thing for the town between the new officers that we're appointing or promotions that are happening. But certainly, we have a promotion that we are doing tonight. I think I'm going to, I don't know where the chief went. Chief, do you want to say a few words before we entertain a motion?
Thank you to Town Council for having us here tonight and for moving that up on the agenda. We appreciate it. I want to say thank you to all the family and friends of Troy Noble and the Police Department that came by to see this occasion. It's something I love to do even more so than, you know, when I hire somebody, giving the opportunity for somebody in their career to move up the ranks. Of course, I myself had moved up the ranks, and it's a very special kind of person that wants to take on that responsibility nowadays to have other people that they are responsible for, especially his fellow officers. And so I think Troy knows what he's getting into, and I really appreciate that sacrifice that he's going to be making in his family as well. A little bit about Troy. Troy's been a police officer here in Plainville for almost eight years. That time has been assigned to the Patrol Division, and since that time, he's been preparing himself to move up by taking on specific roles in the department, one of which is training. He's assisted in the training of our officers for use of force, our batons, OC spray, handcuffing, and he's our taser instructor. On top of that, he also took the opportunity to become a field training officer, where he mentors and teaches the new officers that come out of the academy so that they can have an excellent start to their career. And I think that helps him move very seamlessly into the role of our next sergeant, and I think he's going to do a great job. He has a respect, the admiration of, you know, his fellow officers, his supervisors, and of course, the public that he serves here in Plainville. So I would respectfully request that Officer Troy Noble be promoted to the rank of sergeant. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All right. So at this point, let me first turn on the mic, and then we can entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Troy Noble to the position of police sergeant effective October 8th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Other than congratulations, very excited. I'm glad that you guys are able to be here, and so many of you are able to share the moment with us. And I don't know, does he want to say something? Because we do have a portable mic we can give him if he wants to say something.
We need to vote.
Mr. Chairman?
We need to vote.
We have to vote on it.
Yep, no, I will. Now, you're all set? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Do you wish to say anything?
All right. Got some notes on my phone. Sorry. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I'm not a big speech giver, but I'll make the short and sweet for everybody, for your sakes and mine. I want to thank the Town Council and the Town Manager for having everybody here tonight. A big thank you to Chief Van Gally and my command staff for giving me this opportunity to take on more, take on the ranks and get more responsibilities here. Thank you to my family for all being here tonight. I love you, and I appreciate you coming here to support me. Thank you to a few of my fellow officers who helped me through the process, who knew who you are, give me guidance through it all. And for my wife, Jamie, thank you for always supporting me through this crazy career. I know it's not easy at times, and you hold down the fort at home, and I wouldn't be here without you. I'm ready for my new task here, and I appreciate everyone coming. Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Can you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, the laws and ordinances of the Town of Plainville, you will obey the rules, regulations, and orders of the Police Department, and that you will discharge the duties as police sergeant for the Town of Plainville to the best of your knowledge and ability. Congratulations.
Go slow so people can get pictures. Don't go too fast. All right. Congratulations, Sergeant. So thank you, everyone, for being here. You are all welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. I understand you may have better things that you need to take care of, so we'll give you a couple minutes to filter out. But again, congratulations. All right. So thank you, everyone, for bearing with us here. We do have a presentation. Our library director, Trish Tomlinson, is here tonight. She is going to give us a presentation on the master plan of the library. So good evening. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. And I just want to say good evening, everyone. And for those of you who don't know me, I am Trish Tomlinson, and I am Director of the Plainville Public Library. On behalf of library trustees and staff, I'm here tonight to outline our vision for a 21st century library that goes beyond bookshelves, becoming a vibrant hub for learning, cultural enrichment, entertainment, empowerment, and, the linchpin, connection. The modern library provides our townspeople with a sense of place and belonging and the opportunity to engage with one another. Just give you a little background on how we arrived at our finished product, which is this lovely document here. If you haven't seen one, we have tons. So I have some here. With valuable input from over 660 respondents to our community survey, plus focus groups with library trustees, members of our library friends organization, and library staff, as well as interviews with several town leaders, we identified our residents' needs and aspirations for the library. The overwhelming message was that Plainville loves its library. The beautiful building, the atmosphere, staff, collections, programs, and services are all cherished, but people also want more. We heard you, and we responded. Based on your feedback, we'll focus on four key areas: expanding access, enhancing services, expanding awareness, and strengthening capacity and sustainability. Number one, expanding access. Making the library available wherever, whenever, and however our users need us. We'll revamp our website for easier navigation, increase outreach to engage with users beyond library walls, and offer programs at different times throughout the day to ensure everyone can connect with the library. We will enhance services by exploring cost-effective solutions to carve out new spaces within our existing footprint, diversify program offerings, and empower users with technology skills. Imagine having a separate, dedicated teen space, workshops on navigating the vast digital world, and a makerspace. For those of you not familiar with the lingo, a makerspace is a place in which people with shared interests, especially in computing, technology, and crafting, can gather to work on projects while sharing ideas, equipment, and knowledge. Through generous donations, the library will give creators access to equipment, tools, supplies, and technology they may not be able to afford on their own. We are expanding awareness. We have this wonderful library, but too many people don't know everything that we have to offer. So we are partnering with local organizations, schools, and businesses to reach more residents and showcase the library's true potential. We want everyone to know that books are just the beginning at Plainville Public Library. We've greatly improved our marketing materials and visibility over the last year or so. To achieve the first three focus goals, we have to strengthen capacity and sustainability. We'll invest in staff development and more staff, and explore additional fundraising and funding possibilities beyond the outside support provided by the library friends group, who completely underwrites all of our library programs. And that's where the council comes in. We know this plan is ambitious. It guides us not only over the next three years, but also serves as a roadmap for planning future projects and initiatives. Come budget proposal time over the next three years, it will be vital to have the council's support and understanding behind our requests. We know Plainville residents work very hard for their money, and we don't take finances lightly. We plan to maximize every funding dollar to deliver on the library vision our citizens asked for. With your support, we can build a library that has relevancy for everyone in the community. It will require ingenuity, collaboration, and continued investment. We, the library team, are energized by the journey ahead. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions or field comments.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Just, I do have a quick question. You know, you mentioned a three-year plan. Is this something where at some point in the near future, we'll be able to follow up, and you can kind of guide us, like what you would do in year one, what you would do in year two? Like, do you have that specificity?
We are working on the operational plan.
Okay.
We've already done a lot.
Okay.
And I keep reminding ourselves, we have three years.
Yep.
And we are going to accomplish as much as we can within the boundaries that we're working with.
Okay.
So I will share that, as well as an annual update around this time of year over year on what we've accomplished and what's ahead.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else? No questions, comments from anyone else? Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you on this. Just finding my place here. All right. So we are up to item number two. We do have a public hearing on sewer user rates. I'll ask the town clerk to read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Plainville Town Council, acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 7th, 2024, in the Council Chambers One Central Square to consider the following: sewer user rate for the period November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2025. Copies of the proposed rates are available at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this third day of October, 2024.
All right. Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, I don't know if you want to just give a brief synopsis of what the recommendation is before we open it up for comment?
Certainly. I thank you for the opportunity. I think you know historically that this council, this body, has been very fiscally responsible in terms of how it addresses its rate increases. There were two years of zero, and then 2% last year. This year, the request is 2.5% to address some of the infrastructure issues, and obviously a major expansion that hasn't been done in quite some time through the Honor Heights project. And there were some additional costs or expenses there in terms of enticing residents to tie in to that project. So this is an effort to try and recoup some of that without really overly burdening the rate payers. So I think it's reasonable. I think it's in line, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
All right. Before we open up for comment, any questions from the council? All right. So at this point, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to the public hearing, please step to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you're at 30 seconds left. The second ring means time has run out. So is there anyone that wishes? I'll go right to Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. Why are you given three minutes on a public hearing?
It just, that's what I felt like tonight. I really don't have a good answer for that, John.
Couple of questions. First, does this fee cover the complete operation of the plant?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the plant operations are fine, and the fund is healthy, but we need to maintain those levels. So this is, this is the number we think that does, that accomplishes that.
Yeah. I speak on this every year, and I'm not opposed to it because I understand what we're up against with EPA and all these changes we have to do. And I've worked on three of these plants. They're in construction, so I know. So I'm not opposed. I don't know what the rate is going to be. That hasn't been said. But my water use per year, last year was $397.18, and I know these are well over $400. So that's what probably gets a lot of people, the difference of how much your water costs, and a lot of it doesn't go down the sewer. So, but, you know, my main thing is the EPA. You know, you don't want your sewage to go into our rivers and streams in the ocean, but the EPA, a lot of times, goes a little overboard. I'll give you an example. Next year, in 2025, EPA is going to change regulations for meat processors so strict that they're predicting 50 plants, meat processing plants, will be put out of business. And a lot of this has to do with these environmentalists who don't want cows in the first place, so they don't want them processing. But this is what we're up against, and that's what people should know what's driving these increases. And the other thing, sanitation, to me, is about the most important thing in this town because it doesn't matter if you're on the sanitary sewer system or you have your own septic system. Human waste will cause every kind of disease you can think of. So to me, it is about the most important process in this town because it does affect everybody. We have a lot of other processes in this town that don't affect everybody, but this affects everybody. So I just want to say that you do the best you could on that rate. I know it's going to have to go up, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the public hearing tonight? Seeing no one raising a hand or getting up, we will close the public hearing. And at this point, we can move on to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. We have, oops, sorry. Am I out of time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A motion to approve the September 16th, 2024, special and regular meeting and the September 30th, 2024, special meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We can move now to item four, announcements and reports. Do I want to put Councilwoman Moranty on it? Nothing tonight, okay? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Underwood.
Just a reminder to the public, the Plainville Fire Company is having their annual pasta supper Saturday from 4:00 to 7:00.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
I have a few announcements from Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce. So Thursday, we had a ribbon cutting in Plainville at Lenses Only. I myself attended. The Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager were there. Cute little business, great owners, very friendly. If you need glasses or contacts, stop by, see what they can do for you.
And where are they located?
361 East Street. On October 24th, I have, there are ribbon cuttings at the New Duncan from 10:00 to 11:00. That's 119 East Street. And there will also be a ribbon cutting that same day at 4:00 at Shangri-La at 359 New Britain Avenue. And I'm hearing there might be a third one happening that week. So business is going well in Plainville. The Chambers also having their bowling tournament, their second annual bowling tournament on October 17th from 4:30 to 8:30 at spare time. If anyone's interested, you can sign up on their website. They have also started a new networking group called Powerful Connections, hence the word "her," and they're kicking off its new women's networking group geared toward female managers and executives who want to network, build skills, and exchange best practices. So that is starting October 22nd from 4:30 to 7:30. But I didn't write down where, so refer to their website for that. They are also having their Chamber tune-up on October 31st from 8:30, 9:30 at their office, which is in Bristol. And it's a time to meet the Chamber team to learn and rediscover how to get the most out of your membership, explore marketing opportunities, learn about upcoming events, and networking. And that's open to even businesses that aren't a part of the Chamber. It gives you an idea of what you can get. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other announcements or reports? All right. Seeing none, we can move now to appointments and resignations. We've taken care of item number one. Item number two.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Moranty.
A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mary Joan McBane from the Committee on Aging.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
First, I'd like to say I hope we can send a thank you to Joan McBane for her service on the Committee on Aging. Joan was a very dedicated member of the committee, and she served as, in one of the officer positions for a number of years. And?
Go ahead. Yes. Keep going.
Okay. A motion to appoint Virginia Worrell, 36 Diamond Avenue, to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2027.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Motion carries. Item number three, we do have a couple fire department motions to make.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Underwood.
I have two motions. First one, motion to appoint Jonathan Evans, 202 Milford Street Extension, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And?
Mr. Chairman?
B. Go ahead.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of James Linos Jr. from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other appointments or reappointments this evening? Okay. We are moving right along. There will, no Board of Education report tonight. We can move right to item number seven, report of the town attorney. Good evening.
I have the report for next meeting. It will be over.
Okay. Any questions for the town attorney? All right. We're good there. Item eight, report of the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have four items, and then our fifth item is happenings. And item one, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read through my notes that I supplied or submitted to the council, and just to kind of set things up with regard to the Plan of Conservation and Development revisions. There are, as you know, two applications before us. We have the benefit of having Mark DeVoe here this evening, as well as representatives for both applications, both parties. So I think it might be helpful to engage or have a bit more information to consider and ask the questions that I'm sure this process will prompt. And I know it was, I know it was difficult trying to get through this myself in terms of understanding. It doesn't come up that often, and it just so happens that we have two at the same time. So I-
There will be lots of questions.
I'm sure.
I can pretty much guarantee you that.
I'm sure. So I thought maybe what I could do is get through item one, or we pause, and then have additional discussion before I go through the rest of the items.
Yeah. I think, why don't we handle this on its own, and then we can move?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Right. Okay. So, as I said, the town has received two applications for amendments to the Plan of Conservation and Development. Both applications are private petitions, and both involve inclusions of the proposed PDD planned development districts. The first proposal for the planned development district is across what is referred to as March 17 LLC and Sherman Land LLC, otherwise the Tomaso Brothers, Inc., cumulatively just under 100 acres. The proposal for the POCD is flexible in terms of site design and use. This amendment requires the town to consider a mixed-use approach to encourage a work-life environment within the PDD boundaries. Development may consist of high-density residential, commercial, office, medical, industrial, retail options. The second proposal is revise the POCD to include a proposed planned development district across land owned by Manafort Family LLC at 74 East Street, the former Junior High School, High School. The land area is 3.91 acres, and the proposal for the POCD is flexible in terms of its site design and use, but it appears that the applicant is leaning toward residential use. And again, most of this, I should say, is from the application itself. I have no opinion in terms of just trying to give the information that it is from what the applicant state on there, and trying to lift that information to provide you with some background and a starting point. And again, we have several individuals here tonight that can put a lot more color on this than I can. But the property at 74 East Street consists of almost four acres and would also be a prime location for consideration of creative redevelopment, economic development, in the light of the imminent demolition of its building due to functional absoletance and decreased demand for office space, again, from the application itself. And so there is an item under new business that will take up these two items. And again, it's highlighted in Mark's memos with respect to the statute and why the council is, why this is before the council, in order to review the applications and either endorse or reject these applications and sending back to the Plan of Conservation, to the Planning and Zoning as part of this consideration for revisions to the Plan of Conservation and Development. So at this point, I'd like to pause and defer to Mark, and I think can probably more articulate exactly the steps if I've misspoken in any way. He can help me clean that up. But it is complex, and it's not something we deal with on a regular basis. So we want to make sure we're all on the same page, and we understand the process. I know there are a number of questions with respect to this body's role in this process. So I think that's-
This sounds complicated. Like, I'm not sure I've ever, you know, doing this for a while, but I'm not sure-
And there are a lot of, a lot of acronyms, right?
Oh, you could keep, you could step up, Mark. No, now, you could, yes, go ahead. I'll just keep talking till I, I'm not comfortable. But essentially, we're being asked to add an amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development for these two particular properties.
Right. So there's two documents involved. The first is the Planning and Zoning Regulations, which can authorize a planned development district. The second is the Plan of-
And could I just stop you? The Planned Development District, what, is that a state-sponsored?
That is a local regulation.
It's a local, okay.
In our Planning and Zoning documents.
In our planning and zoning, uh, documents. So the, the, uh, the PDD, um, comes in two flavors. It comes in a small and a large. If it's less than two acres, it can go directly to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does not need to be or have an honorable mention in the Plan of Conservation and Development. If it's over two acres, it requires a honorable mention, again, in the, in the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development. In this case, both items are over the two acres. They are not located or not, uh, drafted in the Plan of Conservation and Development as yet anyway. Um, and I'll point to White Oak. White Oak will be a PDD when they, when they strike the match on the, um, the zoning applications. It is and does have, uh, an honorable mention in the Plan of Conservation and Development as a potential planned development district. So that is what the two applicants are, are looking to do. It's the first step before they can even come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Once they accomplish the goal of, uh, amending the Plan of Conservation and Development, it kicks off the PDD, or potentially kicks off the PDD phase where they would apply to the commission. It's essentially a three-point application with a concept plan, a text amendment that would enable the underlying regulations that they would require to develop whatever it is they're proposing, and a zoning map change. The, uh, the zoning text amendment and the zoning map change are legislative. The Planning and Zoning Commission really needs no reason, they can't deny them outright. The concept plan is a special exception, like the two, um, like, like the zoning regulation change and the text amendment will require a public hearing. So the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, can deny, approve, or modify and approve whatever this concept plan is putting forward. Uh, it can be a sort of a back and forth between the applicant and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, and eventually, hopefully, they come to a common ground. Um, if it's not good for the town, um, if it doesn't present, uh, several, uh, you know, if it doesn't meet several objectives of the regulations, such as, you know, harmonizing with the community, uh, being a, an economic or, or cultural boon, if you will, to the town, uh, the commission has no obligation to approve. So it's a rather safe approach, but it does allow for a lot of creativity and design, and, uh, we're currently working on an amendment right now to the PDD. We never envisioned, envisioned a one hundred acre parcel, so we're going to spread out the, uh, the timeframes that would allow an approach of that size, which would take many years, uh, to, to meet its goals.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna be the, let me just ask this question. I'm gonna be the first one to run through the door on this one, but.
Okay.
I'm worried about the former or the original high school being demolished.
Mm-hmm.
How far away from the decision we make tonight on whether we approve the amendment and they actually getting approval to demolish the original Plainville High School?
As I understand it, the, the permit for demolition has been filed. I know that notices have gone out to the historic.
Yes, yep.
Society.
Yep.
The, um, uh, I'm not one hundred percent sure about how that runs, but if, if a party is and has a, a good reason to, um, request a ninety-day delay, the demolition ordinance allows for that delay.
And the only reason I'm asking this is because this is gonna, the public's gonna catch on to this.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be something we're asked, so, you know, I thought.
This, this process, um, in this process, and I, and I had to go over this with attorney, uh, Beria this morning, because this is only the second time in, in almost forty years that I've been through this process.
Yep.
And I wanted to make sure that the referral to the town council was fully understood. As, and as I understood it, uh, we reviewed the statute, and, uh, so the council may accept the proposal, reject the proposal, or they can consider some iteration of the proposal. However, um, the demolition isn't really a part of the application.
Correct, okay.
Demolition is proceeding separate from the application.
That's outside of this body.
It is.
So to speak.
It is. So if you were to reject this proposal on the basis that it demolishes, um, you know, what's perceived as a, a historically significant building, uh, I think, pardon the expression, but we're barking up the wrong tree. I think there's a place for the, um, you can express that certainly, that it's a concern of yours in your deliberations and in your, um, and your answer back to the commission, uh, to the referral that they've sent to you. Um, however, um, a rejection of the proposal on any basis doesn't result in a denial of the application.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to make clear.
Back to the commission in that regard.
Let me just, the town attorney, can I just, he has, he wants, he wants to say something.
Thank you, uh, uh, Chairman. I wanted to just kind of go through the process a little bit to explain this, because, um, Mr. DeVoe and I did meet this morning, and we did kind of run through it. So what you're gonna be doing now is considering applications to add these properties in your Plan of Conservation and Development to potentially qualify for the, uh, the PDD.
Yep.
Treatment. That's it. So that, um, because you have an acreage, so you have two acres or more, there's been a legislative determination, a policy determination, that that type of, that size of a lot is gonna have an impact on your overall development, and so if you're gonna have that, and you're gonna include those properties, then you're gonna have to go through this process of amending your plan and allowing them to qualify for this PDD. Am I got, is it PDD? Have I got the right letters? Yeah, PDD, so. But all that does is, it makes them eligible for that. That's all it does. Your role is to accept, reject, or you can make, accept, reject, and have comments. However, the way the statute works, if you don't get the report in, you have sixty-five days from the referral, which is tonight. You don't get the report in, in time, it doesn't matter, they can vote, it doesn't stop it. It's not like an eight twenty-four. And it doesn't change the voting. In other words, if you reject, the majority, it doesn't change what Planning and Zoning as far as the requirement of their vote. So what it really does is, it gives Planning and Zoning, who will ultimately decide whether or not they get the PDD, information as to your position, first of all, as to whether they should include it, because they're gonna decide on the, on the Conservation and Development Plan, too. So they're gonna decide, after they get your input, whether or not they're gonna include this. Then if they do include it, then they have to go still apply and go through all the hoops to get the PDD, to get that designation. That is what we would refer to as an overlay. So you have made a determination in your Planning and Zoning Regulations that there are times when you're going to allow development that varies somewhat from what the general zone will have. And that's what these two applications are. So they're starting off by saying, can we apply to begin with? Because it's more than two acres, so Conservation Development and you get to have the input. Then Planning and Zoning decides, okay, are they eligible to apply by deciding that? Then they still have to go through the whole Planning and Zoning process, and that's where you get the review, you're gonna have a hearing, you're gonna have appellate rights, in other words, people can file appeals depending on what the decision is made. So that's really how this process is gonna work. So just starting here is just the first, these guys have got a long way to go, these gentlemen that are here, and I'm sure they are aware of.
Yep.
Uh, that's the first part of this process, and the whole thing on the demolition, uh, you know, that is what I would consider, I would call it, in my terms, a collateral attack on, on it, because obviously, if they can't do it, then it may frustrate the purpose of having the demo, but it would not legally directly impact it. In other words.
Okay.
None of this is gonna directly impact that process.
Okay.
Other than potentially, like I said, it would be a collateral, uh, attack, I would call it, how I would phrase it, but, uh, that's kind of what you're doing tonight. That's the overall process, so you kind of get the overall picture, so.
All right, well, thank you. That helps me tremendously, actually, and.
Discuss it, and if there's any, uh, comments or questions or.
Yeah.
I think I got it right, Mark.
We'll, we'll keep going, we'll keep going, but I just want to say, I just, you know, this isn't, you know, I'm not in the habit of, of telling property owners what they can and can't do with their property, that's not it, but, you know, that building holds significant historical value for a lot of people in town. It's gonna, this is gonna create a lot of attention, so those of you that are looking to redevelop, you are gonna get a lot of feedback.
I would say that also. From this point of view, what you're doing tonight, if you allowed it to become eligible, they could have a plan that keeps the building intact. In other words, just doing this doesn't dictate that.
Right.
Is what I'm, you know what I mean?
And that, that helps me, and I think the town manager, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just want to, uh, just add something to, um, the town attorney's comment with respect to the timeframe and the sixty-five days, I think, prescribed. But in that statute, uh, language, and again, uh, explaining that these are two separate applications, um, that you will either, you know, um, endorse or reject, or, or accept or reject, um, you have the ability, uh, to set a public hearing as well. I believe that is part of the, uh, the language.
Yeah, you can set a public hearing.
Um, if, but, you know, that's another avenue, if, if you wanted to. And I'm not sure, again, that was part of my questioning to figure out how that impacts, uh, the timeline and, uh, the response back to, to P and Z. And, you know, you, I don't think you, you, I think you can.
Yeah, my recommendation, if you decide to set a public hearing, is to do it within that sixty-five day timeframe. I think that the purpose of that is, you're gonna be providing input to Planning and Zoning. And so, uh, if you set a public hearing, you'll also have the input of your citizens, your public, besides your own votes, which is representative of that, but with the public hearing, you might have more further comment, and then it goes to Planning and Zoning and the legislative process, they should consider all of that when they make the decision. So if you went that route, uh, but I really do think, because the way the statute's written, Planning and Zoning, uh, you know, technically, they could vote without the report.
Correct.
It says they can vote, so I would try to get it done within that sixty-five.
If we want a report.
If you wanted to do that.
Right, if we wanted to do a report, we.
That would be my.
We do have a timeframe.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm gonna, go ahead, Councilman Underwood.
I believe I was on the council in the nineties when this building was sold. I do recall the building was, um, had a lot of graffiti on it. I know a lot of us council members took the time with paint, went up to the building and started painting the gra- over the graffiti. I believe it was sold for a special price. I called the town manager this morning to see if he could find out what that price was. I, I thought it was a dollar.
No.
And the reason I said a dollar at the time, I, I know it was a hundred thousand dollars. But at the time, I thought it was a dollar. And the reason we sold it, even for a hundred thousand dollars, which was a really decent price at the time, was we, I think, if I remember right, the council at the time wanted to keep this building the way it was. It's a landmark. And here in Plainville over the years, and I grew up in this town from kindergarten to today, um, we in this town always demoli- uh, uh, destroy buildings that are landmarks, that the, uh, troubled buildings are perfect examples. They've got some really nice-looking buildings here in Plainville. Um, but the town manager did tell me that there was a stipulation in that. I thought you said, Michael, that the, uh, they would keep it a certain way for.
Uh, no, sir, I, I, I did not find any stipulation.
You didn't find any stipulations.
No, that I'm aware of.
Okay. But I think at the time, it was the, uh, council's will to keep it the way it was, as, uh, the old junior high, high school building.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, what Councilman Underwood is talking about is very true, you know, I've read the articles that were written back in nineteen ninety-eight when it was purchased, and nineteen ninety-nine after it was renovated, and, and really has been wonderfully maintained since then, and I also would really like to see that, um, building preserved as part of whatever plan goes forward. But a couple of questions on, on process, as, uh, our attorney just outlined. Uh, on the motions, then, um, for, for both of them, it'd be the same, you know, the, the motions would be structured the same way. We could invoke, I just want to be, make sure I'm clear on this, to endorse, to reject, and then it says or here, but I think it's and actually, you know, we could, for example, vote to approve and comment. Is that, do I understand that correctly? So this is really not a choice of three things, then, it's a choice of two, and we have the option.
That's right, that's very good, yes.
We have the option for third.
That's very good.
Also do a third, okay?
That's very good.
Which would be to, to make comments or recommendations.
Yes.
I just wanted to, to.
Yeah, you're either gonna approve or deny, and then you can comment. If you approve, you can comment, if you deny, you can comment.
Yeah.
Or you can tell them to tweak a little bit, but, once again, that's all advisory.
Right.
There's no authority here, correct?
Well, other than, you know, persuasive.
Mm-hmm, right.
Thank you. But you can't, you know, you can't vote no and stop it.
Yeah. You know, another thing I do wish to point out, though, you know, the Plan of Conservation and Development also has a section on historic preservation and has some very, very clear objectives, uh, under that, so that, you know, certainly historic preservation is, is a, already a plan, you know, part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and not another concept coming in from somewhere else. It's part of the actual plan. Um, I know that this is on the, uh, agenda for Planning and Zoning tomorrow night. If we were to, you know, table these motions tonight and, and possibly, I don't know how the council feels about it, uh, have a public hearing, for example, would that impact in any way what Planning and Zoning was planning to do tomorrow night?
Yes, Mark.
They will have it on their agenda going forward until the date that their public hearing opens up, which is December tenth. They cannot take action until, they can't even discuss it until the hearing opens.
Okay, good.
And that would be December tenth. So the, the sixty-five days runs from a date certain, which was the date that I sent the memo to, um, Michael's office to alert the commission or the council that.
Isn't that today?
This referral's being made, and the tenth runs a few days beyond that.
Mm-hmm. So just to, so in other words, we would not change anything that they're trying to accomplish tomorrow night?
No. No, and I would just add that the, you know, the public hearing shouldn't, you know, sort of fall into a referendum on the, the preservation of the, the structure, because that's not what your, your charge is. Although I could see it turning into that, I think it would be somewhat fruitless, and in fact, um, you know, the, the referendum really needs to be on the, the, uh, the ordinance, the demolition delay ordinance. Like you, the commission has no control over the demolition of the Plainville Junior High School. Even if they deny this application, a, an application, a building permit to demo the building under your demolition ordinance can still proceed.
Yep.
Right, yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand. So it's, it's a, it's a separate process.
It is.
It's a separate process.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Mark.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mark.
I'm getting nicer.
Don't get comfy, right?
Yeah.
So the, this Tomaso property, North Mountain, is that the same acreage that they were considering building a basin on top of the mountain and, there were a few years ago, I don't know if you were here.
Building a basin?
These are public comment section.
Mr. Tomaso, do you want to?
Building a basin?
Yeah, there, there was a project that they were gonna.
They were talking about the lizard wall over there?
Well, yeah, I think you're talking about the, uh, north side of, uh, the Mediacomit Ridge.
Yes, and it, it straddled part of New Britain as well.
So that's the other side.
Okay.
So this is on the, uh, this is on what would be the, uh, term, the, excuse me, the, this is the north ridge.
Okay.
That activity was taking place with Tilcon on the south.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So they've got, you know, they've assembled, uh, just about a hundred acres.
Yep.
And, um, a lot of it was already Zone Technology Park, and in, in deference to, uh, you know, creative, creativity and development.
Right.
Uh, and you could look at a, a standard cookie cutter type of, uh, industrial slash technology types of, of businesses in there, or you can bring a little more creativity to the table, and that's what they're looking to do. And the same is true with Manafort.
Okay, I just know at the time that that property that they were talking about.
Different, different side of the gap.
There was a lot of endangered flora and fauna up there that.
Right. Though, as part of this, I believe, I'm not sure, uh, they could be in an, what's called called an NDB blob, Natural Diversity Database Circle, if you will. And they'll need to contact DEEP and get whatever information they can out of DEEP to make sure that they know what they're dealing with in terms of endangered species, which many times turns out to be flora.
Right.
And, and go from there in terms of their development plans, and what they, what DEEP will recommend to try to preserve whatever endangered species may or may not exist up there.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else with any questions, comments?
Um-
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay.
You're okay?
No. Well, on the, on the, the, you know, the first one, on the Tilcon, there were a couple of things in the plan of conservation development about the headwaters of the Quinnipiac, the vernal pools that are up there, and the maintenance of the Mediacoma Trail as well. And are those going to be affected in any way, or have those already been highlighted as something that would have to be preserved?
Yeah, I think Mark could speak to that, but also-
Mark, you may just want to stay up there, you know, at this point.
At this point, the plans haven't been finalized.
Uh-huh.
But any preliminary designs are taking great pains to avoid wetlands, period. There is a vernal pool, which I've identified, and, like, quite a while ago, when the Cancer Center was being developed.
Okay.
And the, the, the owner applicant is aware of, of that, and has actually chosen to take an alternate route and develop, to develop North Mountain Road further, so to go within that existing roadbed, potentially, for at least a, a ways, so they can avoid that vernal pool.
Okay.
Many of the wetlands up there are, especially toward the former Ayude parcel, somewhat man-made, because the depression that was, was there. But there are quality wetlands up there, and the preliminary plans do show deference to those, and try, try to avoid them considerably. And I think that's to the applicant's benefit, makes their approval easier, particularly with the Wetlands Commission.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman-
Yes.
The applicant is here.
Is he? I was gonna say, same thing, if you want to ask, you know, or maybe just a quick synopsis of that, of that project, but-
Oh, that's true. Just to let you know, it's not near the Mediacoma Trail, but, you know, we've been doing what we can to twist arms to see if there's any way we can develop a connection.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Now, the connection would have to go through Tilcon land.
Oh, okay.
So there's not that, a lot that can be done, unless we can sort of, you know, bring the parties together, and that would be my hope.
Okay.
And it would potentially allow for some trailhead parking, which the town lacks.
Yes, I know.
We have very little parking for the Mediacoma Trail. The only real parking we have is in Southington.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, that's interesting, yeah.
Bring it all together.
Is there anything anyone from North Mountain Road wants to say?
No.
And again, everyone, thank you for your patience with this, 'cause I, I really struggled to wrap my head around this whole thing. We spent a lot of time to-
Do you want to hear from-
Yeah, I, yes, the more information we have, the better, as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, this really was something that I haven't had to go through, so it is complex, that's for sure. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Michael Tomaso. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come and, and speak with you tonight. So, as you remember, my dad, Angelo Tomaso, built Journey Road more than 30 years ago, in an effort to create a, a really dedicated entrance to the old Sherman Quarry, which was the predecessor to Tilcon Concrete. And that sat for quite a few years, as we attempted to market it, first to the commercial markets, and eventually, we really think we found the highest and best use, which was the Memorial Sloan Kettering Harford Healthcare Cancer Institute, and the 75,000-square-foot medical office complex that's in Plainville. And since then, we have developed marketing materials and reached out and bought the Ayude parcel to the north of us, which does now comprise almost 100 acres of undeveloped land in, in Plainville. And your, the town was very supportive in granting us technology park designation for the whole parcel, because part of it was, was residential, with some res, single-family residences in there. You know, over the years, we started looking at commercial, it ended up being medical, we felt that was highest and best use, but the market is constantly changing, and particularly post-COVID. And with a parcel this large, as was previously indicated, we want to be creative, we want to be responsive to the market, and these things take a long, long lead time, 30 years, just in the, from the construction of the road. The Cancer Center was started in 2012, and here we are today, talking about what the future could be. The young people today seem to want to be more in a live-work-play environment, where they can stay in one place, maybe not even, you know, use more public transportation and have their own car, be close to work, not have a long commute. And that, that could require some residential for young professionals. And that, the technology park would still be a central component of the overall development. We believe in the long run, that's the best way to create jobs in this area. They could be medical, they could be life science, they could be, you know, some type of, we call it tough tech, but that would be, you know, kind of high-tech manufacturing. But we don't know yet, and we would like the flexibility to go out to the marketplace and be able to offer to potential companies that would be potentially moving here, and, and workers, the workforce development, that we would have the flexibility of doing all of the above. Remembering that, all we're asking for right now is an amendment to the Plan of Conservation Development for the future to come back with planned development districts that could be more customized, that could have more than just technology park in them. There was discussion of wetlands, and it's a favorite topic of ours, because we want to preserve wetlands. We want to preserve the natural state as much as we can. And this would give us more flexibility, because right now, the technology park zoning setbacks, for instance, are, are pretty deep. And we would be able to potentially contour those around the wetlands, around the sensitive areas, in a way that's more productive, and, and make it more of a community feel than, you know, than trying to comply with, with, with technology park requirements that might have been designed in the past for a different type of, of parcel. It might be private roads, there might be some, you know, there might be a public road interface with, with private roads that we could, that we might need for a future application. And we've, we've tried very hard in the last couple of years to market this to the medical and life science community, as very specifically an expansion of the, the Cancer Center complex. There's a lot of medical office in the area. Look to Farmington, with the, the Farmington Medical Arts, and they have absorbed a lot of it. But when we look to Farmington, for instance, the Metro Group has developed, is now developed, started residential next to Yukon. It then, they then have the whole centerpiece of the Farmington Medical Arts is, is all medical. And now, as they finish that large development close to Exit 39 off of 84, it's becoming residential again. In this case, high-density residential. If we look to South Windsor, to Win Stanley's, very large development there, it started off wanting to be a commercial, but after COVID, we all know what happened to commercial, the, the opening of the, of the project turned out to be residential, again, high-density residential for young professionals, and particularly active seniors. And they were able with, with that, with those cornerstones, to, to attract both too-large, high-tech users that are, that are in the, in the process of developing space right now. One is Verizon, for a tech center, and the other is, is very similar. So that's, those are the, those are the analogous type of projects that we're, we're looking towards. We're, we're just trying to get the flexibility that we need to go out and market to a larger audience, and we would really appreciate your support. We have 100-year history in Plainville of projects, and we, we intend to pursue this one with the same quality outcomes that we have in the past, with support from the community. Thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Are there any, any questions?
Yeah, any questions or comments? No, this definitely helped. And Manafort, you'll, you'll have an opportunity to get up if you want and say a few words, 'cause I think it does help to hear from the parties directly. But thank you.
Well, we're, we're very pleased to be here, and are always on-call when you want us to come back and provide any further input.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So 74 East Street, does anyone want to say anything? Mr. Galski?
Good evening, Mr. Zorko, members of the council. Jim Manafort couldn't be here tonight, but I'll, I'll speak. Oh, Justin.
The other one.
He got the short straw tonight.
I'll, I'll start. The, the school was renovated back almost 25 years ago, and Wheeler Clinic has been the sole tenant for the last several years. And as you probably know, Wheeler Clinic moved that operation as long as, as well as several others along Route 10 over to Bristol. We see a cycle that happened, was happening 35 years ago, when Bristol sucked a lot of our businesses over there, right? It's kind of happening again. But unfortunately, the building is just functionally obsolete.
Yep.
The, the walls between the, the rooms are all brick. Any upgrades would be cost-prohibitive due to the requirements of sprinkler systems. You know, COVID has really changed things as far as retail goes. The property does back up to the, the elementary school, so what goes in there will be very important as well. We think this property is very similar to the Parsons Buick property, which is mentioned in the Plan of Conservation and Development. And that was just about five years ago, when the Plan of Conservation and Development was being written, that Parsons was being sold. So it got the recognition at that point in time. We're now five years, we're midway through the next change in the Plan of Conservation and Development, and that's the reason for the amendment here today.
Okay. All right.
Justin?
Justin Manafort, 33 Lane Avenue. Live in Plainville. I actually went to the junior high, myself and my wife, so I, I was, it was actually my first demolition bid when I was a young estimator, when the town put it out for demolition. So it's a, you know, it definitely has a, has a meaning to us. We're just, we're trying to figure out what to do with it after our, our tenant has, you know, moved to, moved to Bristol, and, and our ability to find other similar tenants that, that would occupy that type of structure is, has really been, been a challenge, and we're trying to figure out what to do with it. So, and, you know, so, in my opinion, the demolition is the last resort, but we're also trying to figure out what the current zoning regulations don't really allow, the way the building is configured don't, doesn't really allow for, for that type of structure to kind of function within the current regulations. That's why we were requesting this change to be included in the PDDD.
All right.
And, so-
And that makes, and that's from my perspective. I think tonight, I, you know, I, I understand what our role is here tonight regarding these couple motions, and, and I'm sure you're aware, but, you know, there's, any discussion of that building is gonna probably create, you know, the, everyone's gonna start talking about that building-
Right.
And what's gonna happen to it. But as also someone who went to that building, it's, I'm sure you guys are aware, but now that I understand our role tonight, you know, I'm, I feel much more comfortable with what we're trying to do here than I did, you know, 45 minutes ago. And again, I appreciate everyone's time and patience with letting me figure out what we're exactly trying to do here, but, thank you. Any questions, any comments?
Yep. Just wondering, what kind of, you know, zoning regulations, you know, changes or creativity or flexibility would you need for multi-unit housing to be on that property? Whether it's converting part of, you know, the building as part of it, or whether it's building all-new?
Yeah, I think, I think it has to, the, the current regulations, it, you know, has, you know, formulas based on the size, you know, sort of, and I don't know it exactly, but it was something like 25 or 30 units is what's currently allowed with commercial on the first floor, with, in, in, it, just the way the config, the building is, it's, it's not really, I mean, I guess anything's possible, but it's not the, it doesn't really work for the, for the way it's configured. You know, so adding multiple units, adding additional buildings to the, you know, either the, the back part of the property, you know, we're, we're still trying to figure out what, what kind of the best, best idea is.
And so just, again, for staff, this, what we do here tonight just allow, that amendment would allow them that flexibility to see exactly what they can do with the, the property, or what other options they have, seeing that it doesn't sound like the current regulations really work.
Right. I think the key, I think the key word is flexibility, right?
Okay.
The PDD allows more flexibility.
Okay.
That, that's my impression. I mean, Mark could, you know-
No, that's, he's nodding yes. Yeah, you don't have to get up again, Mark, don't worry. That's good. Nodding is acceptable. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I don't think so.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I know I'm in a much better place than I was 45 minutes ago. I feel like I understand what's going on, which is nice. Any other comments on this subject? Town attorney, town manager, we're, everybody's good?
Just, you know, I, I know we'll get to this later, but just wondering if we should still consider tabling this, you know, for several reasons. You know, number one, we, we may want to talk about having a public, a public hearing, you know, and that's something there. Also, we may want to consider whether we accept or reject doing the comment and recommendations, and I think that needs some time to, for us to think carefully about what we would like to say. And, you know, and also, it's been a lot to digest tonight, and I think we, it's been very helpful. The information that everybody has provided has been very helpful, but it's, it is a lot to digest, and I think we need a little time to do that. But just, I think we're gonna get to the motions later, but-
And I'm, yeah, and I'm comfortable with that, 'cause I do think, you know, comments, I, I would imagine this council would like to add some comments regarding-
Yeah.
Whether we accept or reject, but I'm sure we have some comments we would like to add.
Exactly.
We do meet on the 21st of October, so, you know, it, it doesn't push this off too long. We, the plan, or my plan would be to bring this up, you know, table it and bring it up at the October 21st to actually-
Yes. And, and Mark confirmed that it doesn't change anything in terms of the plan of zoning.
I, I wouldn't let them vote on it until the 65 days is up. Even though they don't need your report, you have 65 days. I wouldn't let planning and zoning. I would advise them, I shouldn't say it that way. I would advise them not to vote on it until the 65 days runs.
Okay. All right.
And also, we don't want to come up with comments and recommendations on the fly this evening.
Yeah. Yep. No, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree, too.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Now we can move on to item number two.
Item number two.
Oh, moving.
Item number two is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, the discussion around the Phase III alignment. And we had our, our meeting with DOT last Monday night. And so, from that meeting, the, or based on the recent meetings with Connecticut DOT representatives, the proposed alignment for Phase III of the Plainville Connection is Alternate III, which takes the route from Norton Park along Route 177 South Washington to the terminus of Phase II. So the state DOT is looking for consensus of the town council to move forward with the alignment and approve moving ahead with their next phase, or what they have done as part of Phase I and Phase II, which is to get to their 30% design phase of, of the alignment. So that's what, that's what they're looking from us, in terms of the council looking for feedback at, if they, you're gonna give them the green light to, to move forward with the 30% design. I know there's a lot of, it, going from conceptual to, you know, detail, obviously, the 30% allows them to get into the, the detail. And they have offered a, a site walk, if you will, what they call a, a, an audit, if you will-
Yeah, yeah.
Of the, of the, of the path and the alignment, the Alternative III that they have proposed to look at and develop. So I think that will provide a lot more information as well to answer the, the questions of whether or not this is actually gonna be, you know, feasible, you know, and, and on paper, you know, that's what it is, conceptually, until you get into the detail, right, and figure out, can you get from point A to point B? Can you get through the intersection at Broad? Can you get through the intersection at Main? And, you know, how much, how large is the path gonna be? All, all of those details, obviously, they're following the same process they followed for Phase I and, and Phase II. And Phase I is, will be ready for construction. Phase II is nearly, they're almost complete with the final design of that, and this is the most complex, because it involves the most properties. And so, they're, they're looking for consensus to, to move forward. And then, it, again, I, I think, I've heard from, from residents, and I, I've gotta do more, I think, to provide information. And, and again, this process is sort of be as transparent as we can possibly be, and I'm hoping to get the presentation that Bill Hogan and his team made, and we can get up, you know, that to, to our website and, and post it, so people can, can digest that, because this obviously impacts a lot more people than Phase I and, and Phase II. But it is an evolution. It is a, it is a process. I don't think it's been any secret at all. I mean, this has been years in the, in the making. And so I think the council, and, and multiple councils have, have looked at this, and looked at multiple different alignments or alternatives, if, if you will, to try to get from point A to point B. And so- And so, again, I call it an evolution. We look at different ways and options and, and what's going to be feasible. What they think they can, uh, get permitted, because it's not just, you know, what we think. It's what, you know, the state and, and the, and the town will, you know, permit together. So, um, there's a lot in here and a lot to do. So I think, again, I will do my best to, to provide information. I'm going to, you know, hopefully get the presentation, um, out and up to the public. Um, and obviously, they stated that they will follow the same public hearing process. They, to involve public input, uh, as they've done with Phase One and Phase Two. So, um, that's why, this is an item on, under new business as, as well, uh, to get them to proceed. But I'll pause there and answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, just so everyone's aware, the council did meet with the Department of Transportation last Monday night to talk about Phase Three of the bike trail through town. We had a lot of conversation and, um, you know, we had a lot of questions from the council. And, you know, I think we finally kind of got on the same page with the Department of Transportation. And, you know, from what I, what our understanding tonight is that this is allowing them to kind of conceptually get this on paper to see what potentially it would look like.
From conceptual design to actual design and whether or not, right, if, if, if it's feasible.
And, and they, the Department of Transportation has committed to, you know, having public hearings or certainly engaging the public as we go through the process, because that was one of the things we were very concerned about, is making sure people are informed, making sure the community's informed. You know, so we're going to hold the Department of Transportation to that. And as you just, to piggyback on what you just said about making sure we're reaching out to the residents in that area, making sure everybody understands what the plans are. So I think we have a good plan and an understanding with the Department of Transportation, what the council was looking for. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can, and I anticipate we'll continue to have that conversation with them and that understanding. So any other questions? Comments from anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. On our map here, the blue hash marks is the, in between the two black, the blue hash marks is the areas they're talking about. Why isn't the one by the park in the park? It should be over by the pool where it says meet Phase One.
For Phase Two, but that's.
That's right.
Mark, do you want to, do you want to comment on that? Um, because it may be that that is what DOT looks at.
Do you know what we're looking at?
Yes, I do. I, I made it.
You know, okay.
So I, I made that in, in roughly four minutes.
Okay.
I'll keep my mouth.
So that slash mark indicates the beginning and the end of Phase Three. I think appropriately, that slash mark should have been up by the pool.
Right.
And not on South Washington Street. By, by rights, the Phase, Phase One will end, uh, on the gravel path by the pool.
Okay.
Okay.
And Phase Three will pick up from there and go all the way up through to North Washington Street, where it actually will go all the way through to Bruce Avenue.
Right.
Down the right of way, in through the, uh.
Kind of behind the cemetery, behind Bruce Ave, that area.
And the reason I question it is, one of my main concerns about this, this phase is it, it running in front of the pool.
It's running behind the pool.
Not according to DOT.
No, it's running behind the pool.
All right. And that's something we can clarify.
It is.
Because we asked it last week and they.
They've, they've acquired the land.
Okay.
Face, that was part of.
Okay. All right. So if we're, I mean, you sound pretty confident, so I, I don't need to ask any follow-up or.
Okay.
Stop in or, or, uh, give us a call and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll clarify.
Yeah, because I don't think the Department of Transportation, I don't think was a hundred percent sure. They, they said it was going in front.
In front and, and using the same road that, from the parking lot to the pool.
Okay, so the plan calls for acquisition of town land behind the pool. Um, there's a small acquisition, which is temporary in nature to do some staging by the pool house. So the trail will wrap behind the pool and come out to the parking lot from that location.
Okay.
And eventually meet up with the gravel path on the other side.
Okay.
And to, okay, Chris?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and to clarify what you just described as part of Phase Two.
One.
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 One, yeah, one, excuse me, yeah, yeah, excuse me, yeah. You know, it's one of the ones that's already decided.
Trying to trick me.
That's already.
The reason I question it is when.
No, no, I meant to.
When we met with them in March and last week, they were, it, their map showed it going in front of the pool.
Yeah.
I'll, I'm going to check on that, uh, just to make sure. But I reviewed the acquisition maps.
Okay.
And, uh, forwarded them off to the, uh, town manager with, you know, my approval of the aligning with what they initially showed. If there's something amiss, we'll get right back. I'll send a memo over to Mike. I'll check that tomorrow for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And, and my, my other statement is, I just want the public to be very clear. What we're going to prove tonight is the state moving forward with the design phase. Not that this, we're locked into this. It's just so they can actually draw it on a map. Correct?
Yeah. No, that's my understanding is that. Yes.
That's it.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Hey, thank you. Item number three is the water pollution control facility, uh, study, the INI study. Um, and I think Joe was still hanging tough with us. That's great. Thank you, Joe. Um, but you heard from, from Joe and Tig and Bond at the, at the last, uh, meeting we had in terms of the presentation. So maybe I can just, uh, you know, we can cut right to the chase and I won't have to read through this long, uh, detailed, uh, information that you have. But, um, that we're looking, uh, to take the next step under new business to award RFQ two thousand and twenty-five oh one Professional Engineering Services for the Preparation of the Wastewater Facility Plan Tig and Bond in Middletown, Connecticut, in the amount of nine hundred and four thousand eight seventy-two. Uh, these are, uh, these funds will come out of the, um, sewer fund in the terms of rate payers, not the, um, operational town fund, um, budget. So, you know, we're moving along, uh, with that study. And, uh, it is a significant study with respect to, you know, the impact to the plant, the, um, notification in the state that we're over permit and that we are, you know, moving in a direction to, uh, correct and, um, fix that problem, uh, with an INI study. And, um, this is a procedure, I'm not sure if the council, uh, has any additional questions about the next step in moving forward with this, uh, proposal in, uh, awarding that. But that is the, uh, item under new business. And Joe is here as well to answer any lingering questions that may, the council may have.
Does anyone have any specific questions or comments? Just the funding again. I don't, Joe, I don't know, or I'm sure the town manager can, anyone can answer it. Just go through the funding again.
Sure.
Because I'm excited to see it's, you know, believe it or not, you thought it'd be in the seven-digit range. We're in the six, which, you know.
So the total pro.
Still a lot of money, but it's, feels like a small win.
The, the total cost of the project is, um, nine hundred and four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Of that deep is going to give the town a fifty-five percent grant. So they're going to cover four hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty of the total.
Okay.
The town will be responsible for the forty-five percent, which is four hundred and seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two. And if I might just add for John Kislik, um, because he had asked about our budget.
Yep.
And it is true that when, when we set our rates, that covers our operation and maintenance. I think it's also important to let people know that it also covers our, our capital improvements. Um, you know, we, whenever we're buying things, we did a phosphorus upgrade. All that came out of that fund.
Okay.
So I just think that's an important distinction when we talk about rates.
Well, thank you. Anything else you want to add? I know we've talked a lot about sewers in the last two months.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to talk a lot about sewers tonight.
Look how excited you get. I love it.
I know. I, I miss you guys, and I know you miss me too, but, um, I, I think this is a really good project.
Yes.
I, I can't stress that enough.
Yep.
Um, it'll be the fourth one that I've been involved with, and, and I, I really feel good about this one. I think the cost is good on this. Um, so I'm excited to get it started.
Yep, I am too. Anybody else with anything to say? All right. I forgot, were we up to four now?
Yes, item, item four, almost there. Um, so this is the, the update on, uh, ReWorld, formerly Covanta. Uh, two issues, obviously, the ongoing issue of, of noise and, um, the recent application of, to, uh, the state for permission to accept medical waste and to burn medical waste. So, um, I have some, some notes here. And I also wanted to, uh, publicly thank Senator Martin for pulling us together, uh, last week on Thursday to hold a, a, a meeting, uh, with the, um, interested parties and to go through that. I, I've, I've included that at your desk, at your, at your seat, um, in terms of a copy. So the, the minutes of that meeting highlighted in an email, that should be in, in front of you. I think helps, uh, with that conversation that was, was captured with the, um, members in, uh, that were present and participating, member towns, along with Senator Martin, uh, members of the, uh, Health Department. And I think it was a very good and robust conversation, uh, about what, what is happening. But I'll, I'll just read quickly through, um, my notes here. And then, uh, it, it will let you know that we also have, uh, a guest here tonight. Ken Valeri from ERFOC, who can, and speak, uh, to that issue. He has, uh, replaced, uh, Mark Baumann and, who had, had retired. And Ken has a wealth of, uh, knowledge and experience within, um, municipal waste industry and, uh, comes to, you know, to join the team and done a great job and is very, uh, communicative in terms about the, the issues, attended the meeting last week as well with, uh, Senator Martin. So, um, hopefully we can, we can answer a, a lot of questions, uh, this evening. But essentially, um, you know, ReWorld has submitted an application to Connecticut Deep to burn medical waste at their facility in Bristol. Uh, the public hearing is scheduled for November seventh, uh, two thousand and twenty-four via Zoom. In response to the pending application and upcoming hearing, I put together a draft letter outlining the concerns the council has, the community has, based on, uh, similar, similar letter and resolution sent in by the, the town of Southington. The issue of noise is still a major concern and remains unresolved at this time. And these are two separate issues. I mean, the noise issue. And while they are, are two issues, uh, of medical waste and, and noise, they are regulated, uh, by two separate, uh, agencies. Uh, but they, I think, are linked in respect that they are both operational issues, right? So, um, whether you're burning regular waste, burning medical waste, you, you've got these two issues, uh, in terms of noise and whether or not we, we think it's safe, uh, to burn medical waste. So, um, you know, that item is, uh, under new business in terms of whether or not the council feels, um, that it's necessary to send a letter, uh, ahead of the hearing, because there are open comments, uh, for that and, uh, or a resolution to accompany that. And again, it's based on Southington's. I've actually, uh, toned it down a, a bit just to give the council flexibility on, on, you know, the language you want to proceed as a draft language. Uh, you have time, so, you know, it, again, if you're not comfortable with the language, you could table that issue as well until you've formatted the right, uh, language and you can still have time, uh, to get that in, um, for the, uh, November seventh, um, hearing. So with that, I think I'd, I'll pause and, uh, see if there are any, any questions for myself or for Ken, uh, with respect to what's, what's happening.
All right. Any, uh, questions, town manager or Ken? Thank you, Ken, for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I'm not sure.
You know, if you like, I mean, it might, it might be helpful, uh, Ken, if you wouldn't, if I could put you on the spot.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Yeah, I didn't want to do it, but yeah. You can do it.
Introduce yourself at, at the podium and, um, if you want to take us through just kind of a, a high level, because I don't think most people in, well, you know, in terms of the, um, the audience would understand, uh, what our relationship is and how we handle, uh, solid, municipal solid waste and recyclables in, in, in our community.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, again, my name is Ken Valera. I am the Executive Director for the Bristol Resource Recovery Operating Committee. It represents the fourteen towns that Plainville is one of the member towns for and has enjoyed the contracts that you've got now, which are extremely lucrative contracts by today's standards. I'll have to call Mike tomorrow and just let him know that, uh, I'm, uh, I'm generally okay with standing up and talking. But when you make me follow a library presentation like it was and, and then a Tomaso family and a Manafort family, um, you know, you, you're going to make me step up hard here.
We, we aim not to disappoint.
Yeah, yeah. It's a tough, tough axe to follow here, uh. But being in the rubbish business for a long time and, uh, being involved with it, uh, know the Manafort family well and, uh, and also did quite a bit of work with, uh, Tomasos, uh, in, in a couple of different areas. So, um, all strong players. Um, great to be in the room with them. The contract that you presently have for Bristol Resource, uh, Facility, the incinerator plant, um, now called ReWorld. You have ten more years left on your contract with very limited price escalators for the ten years. Uh, we are in the low seventy range now per ton. With the plant in Hartford closing two years ago, a lot of towns saw twenty-five, thirty, and thirty-five percent increases. They're in the hundreds to hundred and twenties per ton for their waste. Um, you also, under Mark Baumann's, uh, direction prior to my arrival, you signed a new contract, negotiated a new contract, and just recently signed for your recycling to go to the same facility that's been going to for a little over thirty years, um, which is also a very lucrative contract. You get, you get good rebates back for the value of the recyclables that we do deliver. And it's processed, both of these facilities are local so that your normal route trucks, whether it's private enterprise trucks doing private subscription work or it's a municipal sanitation department. So your, your cost of transportation and, and removing the waste once it's picked up from the streets is, is about as good as it's going to get. The issues that are presented with the ReWorld plant right now, one is the noise issue, which, uh, Mike had, uh, had described. They were working diligently to try and correct that. There is the Bristol Health, Bristol Burlington Health District that has taken issue with it. Um, they're, they're looking to, uh, try and still mitigate it as, as a company. But because of those issues, the information flow has definitely slowed down with a potential pending lawsuit. So I can't really bring you fully up to speed. I know we do have another shutdown, which is coming, uh, next week for them to do further repairs. I don't know what the extent of those repairs are going to be. It's kind of quiet right now. I will be taking a small contingent of board members on a tour of the plant tomorrow at ten AM. And they are still being very receptive, so, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can find tomorrow. The, uh, the other repairs that they've done over there is they did put in some new fan motors for the air intake. They did put in a new set of, uh, specially designed baffles in the exhaust, which would be up on the top of the chimney. It did mitigate some of the noise, but that's where the discrepancy is coming in right now. ReWorld is, is, again, still working on it. So, uh, I, I want to be careful with how, uh, how aggressive we get as the fourteen towns. Senator Martin did meet and, and give, there, there was eight of our towns represented at that meeting and, plus myself. Um, I, I believe he heard what we were saying in the value of those contracts. And I believe the strong commitment was, none of us are looking to shut that plant down or cause it any big financial harm. Um, they've been a thirty-eight-year member to these communities, um, and provided for your, your solid waste disposal and incineration. So as, as you decide what you want to do with a letter or, or position on it, I just ask that as, as the board, me being the person that's responsible to move your waste for the next ten years, keep it in mind, I will make myself available to Mike or anybody that you designate for any kind of assistance in framing the letter, getting the facts straight. There's a lot of misinformation that's being generated and thrown out there on social media. Um, we don't want to play in that, in that arena whatsoever and just stay on the facts and, and what those contracts are worth to these fourteen towns.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, I have the, we have the notes from when, when you met with Senator Martin. You would, you stated that Bristol is presently do, doing about twenty to twenty-three tons a day of medical waste material. What is the difference between that and biomedical waste?
Biomedical waste consists more of pathological waste. So it would be parts of organs that had been removed. had been removed in a surgical procedure, amputations, things of that nature is, is a little bit more. And it's a very fine line and the definitions, they can move based on what the, what the particular incident is and the facility that they're going to. And, and it's, it's not perfectly worded there in, in the notes. The material they're taking in today, the roughly 23-ton is, is not just medical waste. It's classified special waste. They're allowed to burn a, a percentage of special waste in their regular solid waste permit. It has to be categorized. It has to be clarified exactly what it is, even outside lab testing. But one of the examples that people don't realize, Bradley International Airport and every port of call along our, our coast has to have foreign waste containers that are locked down, sealed with gaskets and for the foreign waste containers for the ships. They literally get lifted up onto any ship that comes into our ports, and this is any port in, in the United States. Homeland Security witnesses and monitors what comes off of that ship and goes into those containers, seals them when they come down. The waste hauler that's got the contract to do that will pick those up when they've been cleared by Homeland Security. And you'll make an appointment and go to any one of the existing incinerator plants here in the state that is accepting it, and all of them do accept it. But it's under special classification. It's a very expensive process because of all of the paperwork that goes with it, even though it's almost every time the same waste. But the fear there is you're getting some type of infectious waste from South Africa or if you've got a load of, you know, fruit or produce that's coming in from South America. Those are, those are the things that you're worried about. Bradley International Airport has a classified Homeland Security waste container there as well. And that goes to an incinerator plant every time it's moved. Those are the types of waste that ReWorld is truly looking to try and put through, as well as there's a lot of medical waste that's out there that is classified by the state that it has to be burned. It can't go to an autoclave type facility, which is basically they put it in a big pressure cooker steamer and they steam it for X amount of hours depending on what it is they're receiving to render it safe for burial in a landfill.
Examples of what the medical waste is now, like from, like it says medical waste, is that?
In their permit application that they, that they put into deep for the change here with Bristol, it, it's listed as medical waste. It can include surgical gowns, IV tubing, things of that nature, gauze from operations and procedures. So there would be bodily fluids on, on those. They do specifically exclude anything that, any, any abortion products and any type of medical from any of that type of a procedure. They, they will not take amputations and pathological waste. They, they've ruled that out in their application and that's in writing.
Okay.
Too deep. One of the big discrepancies that we did see when we, we were speaking with the Southington meeting, they did bring in a, a specialist for medical waste research to their meeting. And one of the things that he brought up was that the, the permit itself is flawed. But it was, it came out there that it was more ReWorld that had the problem with it. And, and we did get that clear with Senator Martin. The permit is generated by deep. The applicant can only fill out what deep requests for information. There's, there's no room to editorialize with it. There's no, you, you fill out yes or no or you give a description of what you're going to be doing for that particular part of the application.
Okay.
So the issue is the application is really flawed and deep and the state needs to do that. And Senator Martin was going to take that up with the Office of Policy Management and, and, you know, their boards up there. So we got to try and fix that. The other big issue that we're all concerned with is that plan is in our communities that, that we live in and, and operate in. Emissions is an issue that we all agree and every one of the towns that was there, as well as the Senator and, and the other boards that were there. We need to do a better job of paying attention to what the emissions are. But that's not the plant operator either. He's, he's monitoring everything that he's required to monitor and reporting it on a regular basis. He even goes as far as on their website, if you go onto their website, you can see the previous day's emissions ratings that they're required to monitor. They're posted on the website for public to look at. The issue that, that we really need to address is for all of the incinerator plants left in our state, we should be monitoring for more.
Yeah.
Items that come out of the emissions on a regular basis. But that's the state level. That is not the operator of this plant or any of the other plants in our state or any hauler that's bringing in the waste to it. It should be better regulated on the state. And I believe Senator Martin was very clear in understanding that when we were there. It was a very productive meeting.
Mr. Chair, this leads into my questions because it was on the continuous emissions monitoring. I noticed in the Southington letter and resolution, they seem to be saying that there's no continuous emissions monitoring. And I, I know I mentioned to, to Mike earlier today, my understanding, like you just said, that there is, but I think it's only on three, three items?
Three items that they're, they're required to monitor.
Yeah. And so I think that's important to note and that the, my concern is, I think exactly what you said, is that the, there is not the state regulation for more. And part of my concern on base is if they were to give the permit now, these would be the only three things that are being continuously monitored. And, and everything else, or mostly everything else, some things are not monitored at all, would be at the annual monitoring where ReWorld does have advance notice of.
Correct.
Right. So I would.
Any plant would.
Right. Which, you know, I think is somewhat problematic too, but, but anyhow, I think that if we draft a letter and resolution, I would want it to be, to clear on the admissions. You know, if we're going to object to something, we don't want to do it with misinformation.
Well, and that's, you know, I would ask if we do have a letter and a resolution ready to go, but could we have you take a look at it just for accuracy to make sure?
Absolutely.
I think that's a good step.
Have Mike, yeah, have Mike stay in touch with me and, I mean, I'll come and sit and work on it with him or, or, you know, give my feedback in on it.
And is that, would that work for the town to get some feedback from Ken?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Before we actually send it off?
Good idea.
And with, with the plant that we've got, as, as Mike said, I've got, I've got a lengthy history here in Connecticut with solid waste. I've got 42 years in the solid waste business. I managed Northeast Waste for the Parati family out of New Haven for 16 years. I ran All Waste, which covers a, a large percentage of the work in this area for 16 years. And then for 10 years, I ran the All American piece of their business down in the New Haven and New Milford area. So I've used every single one of our incinerator plants and doing it for 42 years. I dumped in most all of the landfills that we've got here in the state at one point or another. The Bristol facility is one of the better ones and cleaner ones that, that I've ever used by, by no comparison to the Bridgeport or Hartford. It was still open, much rougher operations than.
Okay. Councilman Underwood, do you want to say something?
I think one of the biggest concerns we have in Plainville and Southington is the noise and the vibrations. And they, residents came here a couple of meetings ago and complained that they've been calling and sending letters in and, and ReWorld hasn't done much of anything. Now, I know you did one item, I think you did on the noise.
There was two.
Two. Something to do with a fan.
The, they had two air fans that fed the air into the incinerators to, to facilitate the proper combustion. They upgraded those at a point, I believe it was about a year and a half ago. It was a couple million dollar investment to, to redo the air feeds. Shortly after that is when the noise started to, started to take calls and they weren't sure exactly where or why. The plant's been there for 38 years and this is, this is really the first time they've had that type of complaint come through. They did large scale sound studies. They hired a specialist that does that from somewhere in the country. I'm not even sure the name of the company, but they did go through and they did find a very low frequency drone type of a vibration noise that's coming out. But it's not a noise that 90-plus percent of the people heal, hear or feel. It's kind of like that dog whistle that some people may be able to hear and others just, doesn't even exist. But there's no doubt about it. There's a noise and, and there was a problem. They changed the fans and they got two identical fans with fan motors for it. That lessened the amount that was coming out, but it didn't cure it. So they had the baffle system engineered and designed and that was installed earlier this summer in, in the stack when they did a shutdown and then they shut the boilers down for, for a week. I have not seen all the reports because of the legal actions going on, but as we were following that, it's our understanding that they were receiving complaints even on the week when they were shut down about the noise. They weren't operating. So there is noise that's out there. Is it all theirs? I, I really couldn't say. They acknowledged they had a noise problem for that facility and they're working to try and take care of it. It's not solved yet and they haven't walked away from it as far as we've been involved with any of our conversations.
Okay. Anything else? You're good. Anyone else with any comments? All right. So I, yeah, if, if you'll take a look, we can get you the letter and the resolution. I would love it.
Be happy, be happy to work on it.
Take a look. And, yeah, we do meet again October 21st. If that's not enough time for you to take a look at it, please let us know.
No, we'll, we'll get it done.
That would be the anticipation. We'll come back on the 21st to take action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ken.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay. Item five, I'm going to hand off to Andy, the happenings.
All right. Who's ready for happenings? Got 13 pages here to get through, so relax and.
In only 13 seconds.
There are only two more.
In only 13 seconds to do it. All right. So starting off with fall bulk pickup, which started on September 9th and will end on October 28th. So it's still going on. It's an on-demand style bulk pickup. So residents, if they'd like to learn more, can go to our website or call CWPM to request a bulk pickup. From the town clerk's office, absentee ballots are now available for the November election. Residents in need of voting by absentee ballot can contact the town clerk's office or go to the town website for additional information. Early voting will begin on Monday, October 21st. This is going from Monday through Sunday, November 3rd. It's about a two-week period. We will be sharing some more information on early voting on social media, but you're also welcome to contact the registrar of voters' office for more information as well. The Youth Services and Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development is hosting a retired state trooper, Scott Driscoll, for an adult-only social media and internet safety presentation on October 22nd. The event will be held at the Middle School of Plainville at 6:00 PM. Leaf collection will begin during the week of October 28th and run until December 7th, weather permitting. They'll start off in sections and move throughout the town and continue to go until most of the leaves are collected. Similar to previous years, residents will be asked to rake their leaves to the curb, not on the street, and as early as possible without blocking sidewalks or walkways. Grass clippings, sticks and stones will not be collected. Bagged leaves will not be collected either, but residents can bring them to the transfer station on Granger Lane if they'd like to drop them off. From the public library and for information on the library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446 or visit www.plainvillect.com/library. Bird migration and its perils, an event on Tuesday, October 8th at 6:00 PM. This is for adults and teens. Registration is requested. The monthly movie matinee for adults is on Thursday, October 10th at 1:00 PM. The library will be showing The Fall Guy, which is rated PG-13. Pajama Storytime for ages zero to 12 with a caregiver, family groups are welcome, is on Thursday, October 10th and on October 24th, both at 6:00 PM. Spookyish Storytime and Experiment on Saturday, October 12th at 11:00 AM. This is for ages three to eight with a caregiver. There's a special Halloween Storytime, which includes the creation of a fizzy potion. A drop-in Lego club is on Saturday, October 12th, anytime between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM. All ages are welcome to drop by, build some Legos and the display will be, those who build Legos can have them displayed down in the Youth Services Department. There's a ukulele class for families on Saturday, October 26th at 10:00 AM. Registration is required. And there's also an adults and teens ukulele class, which will be offered later on that same day at 11:00 AM. And from the Senior Center, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. There's a vaccine clinic open to the public on Wednesday, October 9th at 9:00 AM, by appointment only. Community members can get the vaccines for the following, well, the following vaccines, the RSV, TDP, pneumonia, shingles, the 2024, 2025 flu and the 24, 25 COVID-19. Attendees are asked to bring their insurance card. Hiking at Sessions Wood and Bell City Diner is on Friday, October 11th. Members are asked to meet at Sessions Woods, Sessions Woods, and they'll be followed by a lunch at the Bell City Diner in Bristol. Free Zumba Gold on Wednesday, October 16th from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM at the Senior Center. West Hartford Reservoir Six hike on Wednesday, October 16th at 10:00 AM. Folks will meet at the Senior Center in Carpool and then the hike will be followed by a lunch at First and Last Tavern in Avon. Three Different Approaches to Meditation on Wednesday, October 16th from 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM. This is open to the public and will be at the Senior Center. The Grub Club will be meeting on October 17th from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM. The cost is $8. Most of that goes to transportation. And essentially, the group will be enjoying a meal at Plan B Burger Bar downtown Simsbury and then enjoying a relaxing ride through the area, looking at foliage. Folks are asked to meet at the Senior Center for 11:30 AM. The 2024 Walked and Alzheimer's is on Saturday, October 19th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The cost is $10 and folks are asked to register in advance by Wednesday, October 9th. And finally, the Senior Center is planning big trips for 2025 and they're asking folks to help identify where folks would like to go. So that is going to happen on Wednesday, October 23rd at 10:45 AM. It's just a meeting to share ideas, drop a note at the desk if you can't make it, if you have any ideas as to where folks could go. Again, that's October 23rd. And that's all I have.
All right. So before we move on, any other questions, comments for the town manager or the assistant town manager's happenings? All right. So we will close the report of the town manager. At this point, we'll move to item nine, which is public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. And as with the public hearing, the first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means time has run out. Is there anyone that wishes to address Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
I don't want any of you to think I'm critical of the wastewater treatment plant. I think them guys are doing a great job running that plant and our sewer system. The other thing I have, we, we seem to have a lot of projects going around town that we don't hear anything about until you see them. I mean, we're having these sidewalks replaced at the Veterans Memorial Park. I seen a guy on the roof of the firehouse for a week or two doing stuff. We don't hear anything. I wish the town council would expand on some of these things we're doing.
Well, if you ask, we can get you answers.
One of the examples, when we were, we were buying trucks for either building grounds or roadways, you had Councilman Hurley and Gettleman talk about these trucks. I mean, I know it's in their expertise, but like the roof at the Norton Park, there was no questions about it, no detail, is that going to be a ripoff? You know, they tear off the complete roof and re-roof or not? You know, these things I'd like to know and maybe the public would like to know. I would like to see more detail on stuff like that from the council. Now, the other thing, it's been mentioned tonight, the town sold property to the state for $53,100. And now Mr. DeVoe is saying it's on a backside of the pool, which I think is a better idea. But is that part of the original park and can land be sold that was part of the original park? This is just a question I have. I didn't know that, you know, we have, it was donated by the Nortons and here we're selling off part of it, if it is part. So it's something to look into. I don't want to answer now.
Okay.
I don't want to get three minutes.
Town manager's writing so that we'll get, we'll find out.
The other thing, and you know where I'm going to be going with this, the Apple Harvest Festival is two weekends in a row, last weekend and this weekend. And the chairman of the town council made a statement in the paper, it does not cost the taxpayers one cent. And we have our thing where. we have our thing where, I know it's going to be a little bit of time before I get the results of our costs, and I'm predicting $50,000 of taxpayer money. So I just want to do a comparison to one other town that's doing something bigger, and it doesn't cost the taxpayers. And I'm not a fan of that trail. I think the state is, they're messed up. And these guys who are doing this, they don't live here. They don't have to go through it. And to me, I don't know, they're zigzagging and all kinds of stuff, making the trail a lot longer. So I don't like it. We might be stuck with the state forcing this down our throat. But we're just council, you know, you're doing a good job, but keep, keep after them till what's better for overall for the citizens. And my last thing is, like I promised, I have a freedom of information to get a copy of the Second Amendment of the town manager's employment contract. Thank you.
If you want, Cindy, should we give that to you directly?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address? Yes. Roberta.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. I would like to first start by saying, we told you so. So many people came up here and told you why, based on the path the DOT originally proposed to take, it was not going to work. You saw that last week in the presentation with the changes they want to do, and how it will impact residents in Plainville. For that reason, I am asking you to table or not approve the preliminary concept that was brought to you by the DOT group last week. You're not reading the fine print here. Because of the way grants can work, the challenge with this concept phase that they presented and that they're asking you to approve is that you have, you can actually tie your hands with this, and you'll be stuck, except for minor changes. And it won't give you the ability to move the trail to better or safer areas if that's needed. You will be forced, the town will be stuck because of your vote. The concerns you talked about last week will happen if you make the mistake of voting for this tonight. Councilman Hurley alluded to using the rails by the airport. William Hogan said toward the end of the meeting that we are not going to move this trail to the other side of town. Numerous people have come to you talking about going down Northwest Drive and using Route 10. Using that route, you have the width and ability to make it work successfully for trail users and businesses. The excuse that has been given is that there are too many driveways. Here's the thing. Many area cities and towns are doing just that already, very successfully. Do not let history repeat itself. Step up and be the leaders you said you wanted to be when you asked to sit in those seats to represent the citizens of Plainville. Table this or vote no in this preliminary process tonight. Go back to the DOT. Insist you get something in writing that clearly states you and the residents of Plainville have the option of being able to move the trail if it doesn't fit the vision of what it should be for our town. What's another couple of weeks in the scheme of things? You just spent a considerable amount of time having concerns about the high school and the possibility of the old high school and the possibility of that getting demolished. You had, you spent more time at the meeting on Monday, having concerns for the citizens. And yet you want to try to approve this? Trust me, and what's happened in this over the years, and I've been following it, you will tie your hands. And the people that you were talking about last week trying to protect, they will not be protected.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, we will close public comments. Item 10, old business. We don't have anything under old business. We can actually move to item 11, new business. Let me find the right page here. Item number one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to approve a 2.5% increase to the sewer user rate for the period November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two. Somebody's got to say something.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It was suggested that this, these motions get tabled, motion number two, and for both, for both items, is that, does that require a motion for tabling, or is it just suggested?
Yes. Yep. If you just want to make a motion to table item number two, that's...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table number two, the options for North Mountain Road and the options for East Street 0074.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just, I do have a comment, and I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. Clearly, for me, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, this is a lot of information to try and get my head around. And, you know, I appreciate the patience. And we will be taking this up at the October 21st meeting. But like we indicated earlier, I think we would like to have an option to provide some comments. And quite frankly, I haven't had, now that I understand what I'm actually voting on, now I can kind of sit down and organize, organize my thoughts. I'm sure some other council members will have some thoughts of their own. But we will take this up on October 21st and, you know, take, take a motion and act on the motion. So we won't hold this up. As far as I'm concerned, we'll handle it the next meeting. Any other comments related to item two? All right. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Councilman Hurley.
Motion to authorize the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to move forward with 30% of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Phase III design.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've got to agree with, with, with Ms. Loria. I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight. If we do vote, I'm, I'm going to be a no. I have more questions than answers.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have the same feelings that fellow councilman Ben has here. I'm, I'm not ready to, to give in to this count, to the design. For some reason, I just don't feel it's, it's adequate for, for our town.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I agree with the comments made by both Councilman Gettleman and Hurley. I'm not comfortable with voting on this tonight. And I know that when we met last week, I mean, everything was so conceptual and that this is supposed to move it forward so that it's less conceptual and they can actually answer questions. But I think some of the questions that we asked last week that they didn't have answers to were things that they could have gotten information on, regardless of whether the design had been set in stone or not. So I'd rather not vote on this tonight.
All right. I'm going to, before I ask for any additional comments, I think we're leaning towards tabling at this point. But what I would suggest, if there are questions, if specific questions that we, if the town manager's okay with this, if we can, anybody has any questions, get them to the town manager. You'd be okay forwarding on to the right people at the Department of Transportation to get answers.
Yeah, like I said, we'll be in contact with Bill. We are already seeking the, you know, the document in terms of presentations.
Yep.
So we can certainly add on whatever we...
And I know, and not to, you know, and I, I'm fine with tabling it for now until we get questions. But, you know, there, there is a point where we are going to have to see something. In order to get something in writing, we kind of have to approve the conceptual design. So, you know, we're kind of in that catch 22, is we can't really wait for the conceptual design because we have to approve it before we can get it.
Chairman, I'd just like to change, change my statement about the motion and take it back to tabling it.
Yep. Yeah. And that, and let me just, and I think, you know, and that's why I just want to make sure that we understand that we really aren't going to get anything in writing until we approve the conceptual design. So, you know, that's one of the reasons it was on the agenda tonight. But I'm fine tabling it and letting all the questions get answered before we vote on it. So that would be my suggestion. Get questions to the town manager, and we will take it up at the next meeting.
That's fine.
If we can get it in writing that we are not locked in to the conceptual design of, of that, then, then I may be a little more comfortable.
And maybe that's a question. It sounds like there's some gray area around exactly a conceptual design. Does that lock us into the specific streets? And what's, and I do, they did say minor changes. You know, is there a way to quantify what's a minor change to them?
I will say that if you go down South Washington Street, and I did go down there to have a look, the front yards on South Washington Street are so small that if you were to take some of that property away from those residents, they'd have no front yard at all.
Right.
And not only that, it would cut down on what they're going to receive for a price for that house when they go to sell it. Who would want to buy a house with a trail in the front yard and their front door is 25 feet from the trail? Because the front yards really are less than, some of them are less than 50 feet from the road to the front door. So I think that that, and that was given to us last week, this design, maybe a week before, but we haven't had it for a long time. And then you take North Washington Street and West Main Street and put the crossing there. Every time a trail person on the bike hits that trigger, the light's going to change. That light changes fast enough already, the traffic backs up there. So we do have a lot to talk about, Councilman Hurley and Gettleman.
So let's just, at this point, questions to the town manager. We'll do the, his best to get answers by the next meeting. And we can, you know, certainly, there's a table motion on, on the floor. If anyone wants to second that.
Just the first motion's on the floor.
Well, I think he's, he's, uh...
Yeah.
Well, I think he's taking back his original motion and would like...
Motion to table the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to move forward with 30% of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Phase III.
Second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that's another table for this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Let me just find, item number four.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to award RFQ 2025-01 Professional Engineering Services for the preparation of a wastewater facilities plan to tie and bond Rocky Hill, Connecticut in the amount of $904,872, and authorize the town manager to execute the engineering services agreement contingent upon review of the town attorney.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any follow-up with that motion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
I don't know how the council feels on motion number five, but I'd like to table that also, a little more discussion, since we had that gentleman here tonight to give us some information.
So you're making a motion to table?
I'd second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. And I think we've talked enough about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we know, follow-up, we'll send it over. Let Ken take a look at it. And there'll be another item for the next meeting. We're setting a record for tabled motions.
I know. We haven't done it.
Mr. Chairman. If it wasn't for the wastewater treatment plant, we wouldn't get anything done.
No, we're making history. I love it.
Mr. Chairman.
Item six. Yes, Councilman Underwood.
Motion number six, to approve tax referendum refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That takes care of new business. Don't stop packing up. There's still other discussions of interest. Anything else that we haven't covered yet tonight?
I think I'll save it for the meeting on the 21st.
Motion to table that to the 21st. All right. No other discussions of interest, no executive session, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. We'll be back on the 21st for our next regular meeting.